All right, it's my pleasure to bring this Board of Fire Commissioners Meeting for January 24th, 2023, South King Fire and Rescue Order. I call Commissioner present in person. Commissioner Berger, would you read us in the flag, please?
I'm running on the flag. I pledge allegiance to America, to the republic, and to its citizens, all of them who are made invisible, protected, and just as far all.
Before we go any further in the agenda, I'd like to take a moment. I think, as we're all aware, retired Fire Chief Bud Thorson passed away a few days ago. And I'd like to ask for a moment of silence to remember Bud. I don't know. I didn't look it up to see how many years Chief Thorson had been with our department. I know a lot. What I do know is that he was certainly active in the fire service, whether it be locally here, all the way up to the state level. So certainly was a force in terms of the fire service. He was also very, very active in the community. He was a leader in the community. And being a leader in the community back then, we were not a city. So there was no city government, there was no city council, there was no mayor. So other people sort of stood up and stepped up and then got things done. But he was certainly active in the community. One thing I might mention is that in 1977, Federal Way Citizen of the Year Award was given to Bud Thorson and the volunteers from Fire District 39. Anyway, I certainly remember Bud for a long time, and I thought and prayers go off to the Thorson family. All right. Need to approve minutes for the last meeting. I can have a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes of December 27th, 2022.
Mr. Chairman, I approve the minutes for the December 27th, 2022 meeting. I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Thompson, seconded by Mr. Berger. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes of December 27th, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Hearing unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Comments? Start with Mr. Thompson.
Great.
Mr. Vidino, are you ready?
Happy to be here, everybody. Had the opportunity to attend the workshop, Federal Way City Council Workshop Retreat with Chief Bataptin and Commissioner Berger. And the topic of discussion, the main topic of discussion was the downtown core redevelopment and the funding model for that. And one that they're considering the tax increment financing, which would have a significant impact to revenue for the district because we would not be getting any revenue from that project for up to 25 years. And the revenue that we're currently getting from that area would be frozen at whatever the rate is when we initiate the tax increment financing. So basically, we'd be providing services without total compensation. The rest of the citizens in the district would be underwriting those services. So we have some supporters on the council that were looking out for our best interest in the discussions, but it's still ongoing. And Chief Bataptin is working with the city to get meetings together to further discuss the impacts and maybe some mitigation. Mitigation is available through negotiations with the city. And we have some ideas, I think, that will give us some revenue and hopefully. What else? I went through withdrawals on Sunday, no footfall for any team that I was supporting. And it was a long day. But anyway, I too echo the comments by the chair regarding Chief Thorson. He kind of ushered through the years, the merger of the five fire districts into one, which has ultimately resulted in the merger with another district, a sixth district, and that was Deloitte's, which is now a real part of South King Fire and Rescue. So very forward-thinking, visionary, and he was the chief, the chief's association president for a couple of years, and raised the bar in that organization as well. So yeah, we federal way during his reign, or his reign as chief, trained a lot of resident firefighters here that went elsewhere across the state and across the country. And so the impact of Federal Way Fire Department is widespread because of some of the policies and programs that Chief Thorson instituted. So good job. Yes, for sure. So that's it, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Vidino.
You are strictly for that one.
Mr. Buller.
Yes, one thing, the monthly report, thing that really caught my attention is the amount of things focused on accountability, training, and such a very positive attitude throughout the report. The only complaint I have is Sando went by my house too fast, and I didn't get to run out there and way back.
Mr. Berger.
I'll thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll reserve my comments for other items on the agenda. I'll thank you.
All right. And I have not been moving it myself. All right, election of board chair for 2023. Are there any nominations for board chair 2023?
Mr. Chairman, I'd be pleased to nominate Bill Gates for the fill-in-the-blank year in succession. We don't know how many years, but I think another year of service is more than appropriate deserved. And so I'm glad to nominate Bill Gates as our chair for this year.
I'll second the nomination.
Are there any other nominations?
How many years has it been, Bill?
You may recount.
Did he draw my nomination? You know Lori, how many?
I think it was ten or twelve.
Ten or twelve. Well, out of thirteen.
Okay, if there are no other nominations, then it's all in favor of myself for chair, say aye. Close. Hearing unanimous. Thank you very much. All right, election of board vice chair 2023. Are there any nominations?
Nominate Mark Thompson.
A second.
Are there any other nominations? There are no other nominations, all in favor of electing Mark Thompson, vice chair for 2023, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Hearing unanimous. Very good. All right. Are there any public comments? Hearing none, we'll go into Title VII, Commissioner Committee Reports. I'd like to start off and make one comment here regarding the official guidelines. At the December meeting, we passed guidelines and basically passed all of the changes, recommendations that had been made. And last Friday, I went down to a station to pick up my packet. There were no packets there. And so I sent an email to Lori and I said, are the packets ready yet? I didn't tell her I was standing in the mailroom. And she emailed me back and said, I forget exactly what she said, but in the guidelines, you passed the change that the packets will be come out electronic. And I replied back, I guess I missed that change. Anyway, I think what I'd like to suggest or ask is, when we passed the, all of the changes last month, we really had two that we were looking at for us. One regarding official compensation and one regarding understanding committees. The other changes, the other whole set of guidelines had been mailed to us in August. And we never did go through or discuss them, I think partly because the next meeting, Mark was on vacation, couldn't fall in, and he somehow never got around to it. So if anybody feels like we maybe passed something that really never got a chance to be discussed, or something you'd like to add some comments on, what I'm going to do is ask Lori, give everybody a hard copy, a fresh hard copy of the guidelines, you know, really formatted and all that good stuff. And take a look at them, and if there's any comments, changes you want to make, anything you want to discuss, get those changes to, you send them to Lori, or to Mark, or to Bill.
We need to come to me, and then the Policy Procedure Committee would meet, because if you were to send them to the two commissioners, then that would be a violation of the public agreement after.
So is there any change that, after you look at them, get those changes to Lori, you know, maybe take a couple of weeks to do that, and then that'll give her and the Policy Procedures Committee maybe a couple of weeks to meet. And so that if we want to review anything at next one's meeting, we can do so.
Seems to me that's really an administrative issue and doesn't even belong in the fire office.
You're talking about the electronic agenda packet? Well, that's an example.
Think through that.
That's probably an example of why we need to talk about it. But, Mr. Chairman, I strongly, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Bill. I strongly support that. I think that's not only good for us, but for the public in case there's a question or comment on it. You know, it's our policies and procedures, and I think it's important out there, it's more of a discussion, formal adoption. Could I ask through the chair, Lori, is it possible to give us not only a clean version of the proposed document, but a clean red line version as well? Because I think we've seen more than one red line version in the past, and to be honest with you, I've got a little confused. Is that possible to do that as well?
Let me see what we have.
And I think like on the guidelines, or, I mean, or the packets.
And we had, the first red line version we sent out, then we got responses back, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Thompson and Buller. And then the committee met and took all of your suggestions and discussed them, and then we sent out the final version.
What happened was, for me anyway, when I downloaded it, it kind of got messed up on my computer in terms of the red line version. And so it would really be helpful to have a, when I say a clean red line, I mean red line versus the current document without any change. So we're going from, assuming we didn't, at the moment, at the last meeting, what exists versus what's proposed in both clean and red line, then we can easily see what the changes are existing, if possible. Because I can't do it from my computer because it overrode and it's a mess.
Well, we're doing two things when we very first started updating the guidelines. And Commissioner Thompson, we were highlighting the new stuff, and I want to say making it in yellow, and then the stuff we were deleting was in red or had a strike through. That's how we started doing the document before we started, quote unquote, tracking changes.
Yeah, I think it's just the way I download it.
I'll see what we have.
Track changes on or off, or, I'm not good about it.
No, it did not. You don't have to have, you shouldn't have the track changes on because they will not register.
That's probably what happened so much. I can't go back and look at a red line. That's why I'm asking for, you know, an accurate template, if possible. Thank you.
Anything else regarding Commissioner or committees? Okay, approval of the strategic bridge plan.
Mr. Chair, I approve of the strategic bridge plan as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made to approve the strategic bridge plan by Mr. Thompson, seconded by Commissioner Berger. Discussion?
I assume that with sometime in the future, we'll start to see performance measures roll out, but the specifics of each of those is going to be there. It reached a point in this where I believe that we needed to have this to sort of memorialize this, and going forward, we're going to begin to fill in the blanks, so to speak. So yes.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to compliment everybody. I mean, there's a lot of work went into this, there was a lot of thought that went into it by the different participants that were in the different pillars of this plan. And we need to carry on and not be hung up on the way we used to do it, but how we want to do it in the future. And the, they've got the, there's a need based upon the comments through the organizational health assessment that is the driver behind these, and we need to aggressively and open-mindedly work on this plan to carry us into the future.
I'm impressed. I think we got an awful lot put together during a short period of time. In the way that, when you said, I mean, we know we're doing it well.
I agree with the comments of the chair and vice chair. I want to particularly congratulate, thank and congratulate Director Lee for his leadership and doing this massive effort involving dozens of people, dozens and dozens of people at all levels of the organization, for the various, the chairman says, a very short period of time. The consultant was very impressed with, I've never participated, as Chief Bataptin knows, of all the strategic plans I've been involved in, both public and private sector, anything quite like this, I was a little skeptical at the beginning of something could be, if something like this could be pulled off in such a short amount of time in this, in this sort of unique bridge process. But it's an impressive document, a lot of work's going to be required to implement it in the two years that are set out here, but congratulations to the leadership, because I should, great job. Thank you.
It addresses the organizational health assessment issues very well, covering a lot of territory in that health assessment.
Any other comments? A motion has been made and seconded to adopt the strategic bridge plan 2023, 2024. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Hearing unanimous. Okay, Resolution 626. Chief, would you read that, please?
I will. Resolution 626, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South King Fire and Rescue, King County, Washington, establishing meal per diem and mileage expenses for district personnel, adopted by the Board of Commissioners of South King Fire and Rescue, King County, Washington, at a regular meeting this 24th day of January 2023, with the following commissioners being present and voting.
Is there a motion and a second to approve Resolution 626?
Will we read the, or? Resolution 626.
Motion made by Commissioner Fuller, seconded by Commissioner Thompson. Discussion, questions? If not, all in favor of approving Resolution Number 626, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Hearing unanimous. Thank you. And Resolution 627.
Resolution 627, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South King Fire and Rescue, King County, Washington, establishing Juneteenth as a holiday and setting forth the revised district holiday schedule, adopted by the Board of Fire Commissioners of South King Fire and Rescue, King County, Washington, at a regular meeting this 24th day of January 2023, with the following commissioners being present and voting.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 627.
I'm for Resolution 627.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Vidino, seconded by Commissioner Berger. Comments?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question in order to commend whoever brought this forward. I don't know if this was staff or another commissioner, member of the public, but Dave, do you know who, is it you who proposed this? It's certainly appropriate with both the Congress and our state legislature having done so, but just curious how this came forward.
I believe it came from staff.
Very appropriate, just to join the national stakeholder community now, recognizing to all of it.
If I can ask a question on the holidays, on the last one today, either before or after the Christmas holiday, did the district decide which day is the holiday?
Yes, some of the labor contracts already specify Christmas Eve, so we, there's a group that does not currently receive that benefit, so we wanted to leave it up to the group to provide input on that, but that allows the district the flexibility to decide which one.
Is Juneteenth, Joe, Juneteenth, and the last bullet, which you just described, the only changes to our?
That's correct. Yes, when this was addressed, and just to kind of clarify, this is something we've been wanting to do for several years, and it's unfortunately just been backburnered. But when I approached the board secretary, we had a discussion, and it's been so long since there's been a record of official holidays that the board has adopted, we felt it was appropriate to just bring forth a new schedule and memorialize it.
Thank you.
Any other comments, or? Okay, all those in favor of approving Resolution Number 627, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Hearing unanimous. Thank you. Administrative team report.
I believe you have a pretty thorough report from all staff. However, I know that Commissioner Berger had requested Chief Chaney give a report, but prior to that, I would, did you have any specific questions of any staff members?
One question on, we have in front of me here, but on training, and it said something like, you know, the goal will be to have 80% of the training completed every quarter or something like that. You know, what happens to the, does the other 20% carry over to the next quarter, or does it get done, or?
It's a little bit of, it's a little bit of a combination of all three considerations. So not every training that is assigned has an opportunity for our firefighters to attend in that quarter based on schedules. And so some of those classes carry over. Some classes that get assigned may not be applicable to them based on their qualifications, and so those fall off the plate after the end of the quarter. And then there are those courses that are offered once, and somebody may be on vacation or they may be on a debit day, and they may or may not get it, and those fall off the plate at the end of the quarter. It's mainly a scheduling, it's a function of scheduling and qualifications.
Thank you.
So I didn't think it was appropriate for me to speak earlier when Commissioner Berger was talking about the strategic plan, but I do want to make note that Summer has been an instrumental part in the planning process with us, and I just want to make sure that's captured on the record, and she will be helping us moving forward, so.
Thank you, Mitch. Sorry, I should not have left her out.
That's okay, I didn't feel it was supposed to be to speak.
She's a support person.
Yes.
I was looking at you, not the.
No, I get it, and I just wanted to give her some mention there, so.
Or we go to Chief Chaney, another question?
Can I just introduce, I was intrigued by my Mr. Chair when I read Chief Chaney's summary of last month's activities. He talked about the potential establishment of a, a program that apparently the city of Seattle Fire Department has. He's copied it for us, the Strategic Leadership Development Program. And I asked him to come to, come to the meeting tonight and tell us more about that concept, specifically in his reporting, referred to the chief of that department, Chief Skoggins, for input to make sure that that program and a proposed program for South County departments would be consistent and remain solvent. I asked that he explain what that means, consistent and solvent, and then I also asked Rick about funding, where would the funding come from for such a program? So if you could just tell us more about it, I think we'd appreciate hearing your side.
What I tried to do, or I have done, is included the Seattle model for their executive leadership academy, and I contacted Dr. Avorio to see where that would fit into our program. Specifically, like EFO requires a bachelor's degree to get into the program, this one doesn't, so where, did he feel it would fit in our program? He stated it should be earlier, any forward and back, not only his comments, but his proposal to create a South King County model for the consortium. When I took that to Chief Webb down at the consortium, he said, whoa, 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 wait a minute, I'm not a professional courtesy, he wants us to, and it's the right thing to do, go talk to Chief Skoggins and make sure that, A, we're not stepping on his toes, because it was his, his child that he. That he uh worked at the University of Washington to create this. So we want to make sure that we're not stepping on his toes, which I'm confident in his leadership, that he won't. Find out, but we should ask him that. And then also explore the fact that other departments. Uh, bring cohorts into their program to make sure that we're not going to take away from the cohort so that they can't sustain their program. In other words, then we would just join with theirs and not create one down here. But if we could create one up. Down here, the advantage to that is the uh. Students would be working on pro uh problems and. Issues in our departments rather than Seattle's. And the input would become coming from our leadership rather than the Seattle leadership, so. But and. Dr. Alavio uh changed this program, made modifications to the Seattle program for that. It's really the key to this executives leadership academy is is really focused upon experience and doing something over. Of course, work. That's kind of the key.
So would it would it be on on uh the chief officer? I presume this would be for chief officers or potential chief officer.
He even suggested all the way down to the uh. Company level officer because he's a, we need to start thinking this way. Teach them earlier. Uh, I think we've been folded into the battalion chief.
Not having had a chance to read this proposal, of course, yeah, but. Was the idea, the concept that that you're talking about here would be something that folks would do on their own time, on company time? How how would this work?
I don't know that.
How does it work in Seattle?
I they I they do it on their own time, I believe.
On their own.
Uh, there is concepts in here that I can't address because this is for the training consortium, so each department. Leadership and labor can have to come to a agreement.
So so Chief McCaptain, we would hear more about this later presumably if it if if it has legs.
Yep.
Comes to us.
And uh, if you ask about the cost, it's actually when I found out how much it costs per student, my jaw hit the. Deck, it's only four thousand dollars per student for a two year program.
Right, two year program.
I think a key element is how does it fit into the bridge plan? Are you integrate, is it integrated, is it conflict? What what is expected in that strategic bridge plan? I would say it's going to fall under the the leadership. Component or pillar. That's an interesting point. Um, we need to. Look at that and fold it in. This has not been adopted, however, it's in draft form. And so as we develop. The bridge plan, I think we need to leave a a. Position open for it to be inserted in that and work through that process. But the consortium, at least in my opinion. Um, needs an opportunity to review this. I don't know that. It would be adopted consortium wide. Um, exactly the same, I think, of the adjustments. Based on the each department's specific needs. Um, but it would be nice to have at least. The body of it remain intact throughout the consortium. Um, and. I think we have a little ways to go before we get to that point. Um, but the goal being establishing it there first. And then I think we can fold it into to our bridge plan. That would be my recommendation that is part of officer development, with officer development goal that we already have. Thank you for elaboration, Rick.
I have a question. Um, Chief, if uh, but this also includes maybe the top couple of candidates on the promotional list? So if I, we have some idea is how many promotions are going to be had during the length of the list? Maybe target those folks and get them trained up as well, so there's no gap. Uh, when they take take office?
I'm not opposed to that in concept. Think we probably want to discuss that with Labor and find out what the implications are there. But I I think that's, there's probably some merit to that for sure. Especially if we're going to start this at the B C level, so.
Because I hate to see us get into the program and we have a gap because we make a few promotions and stuff and. There's a, there's a crack there that needs to be filled, so if we can get it ahead of time. And. Be a lot more uh conducive to continuing the the goal of getting people educated and trained.
It's certainly going to take time, some people's time, because you see a lot of of uh. Coaching uh and team. Teamwork, team. Preparation, follow up, um. Cross boundary development, it's it, it will take some time, yeah. Not a, it's not a simple process, yeah, program, it's pretty complex. And that's where I see the value personally in having the consortium adopt it. Uh, at some level universally, because we. We're much stronger when we're dealing with a larger group of people and at least in this setting. So I think if we can get it there. Um, we're going to be hands down better off. Now, the teamwork is good with the other in the in the zone is going to, just that cross fertilization, we might call it that, will. Be good on leader, from a leadership standpoint.
Yep. Rick, the resource of that's used now for the Seattle program. Um, does that come from the university? From the department, both, neither, do you know?
Talking about financial?
No, no, uh, people resources, in other words, coaching, the coaches. The the instructors, the leaders of group, you know, group exercise, whatever. Do you know where that resource comes from?
From both the university and.
And and the city. So do you hope, we should automate that that would be, have to be similar here would both be the university and let's say the consortium resources? Is that the idea?
Right, to make the partnership there.
Thank you.
Um, so my. There was this on on the um. Cover page, T G Leadership Development. E L A proposal, what's E L A's there?
Executive Leadership Academy. That's part of the foster school business. Correct. Depending for accidents.
Is there any action for us to take on this?
I think it's this presentation for you to kind of see where we're at on it.
Any other uh questions regarding the administrative team report?
Yes, this this one parting comment, I guess, is that I like the concept, I like the uh, the focus and I like the the title. That uh our officers are the executive leaders of of this uh organization. Especially as they move up the chain of command and promotion and what have you. And so by educating folks uh down to the the company officer level and that and uh those on the list. Uh, that has nothing but positive things for us for. From this day forward, when we start implementing this, it's going to raise the bar significantly. And I think our people will be a lot more responsive and and engaged in the operations within the organizations.
This is just my opinion of the H programs.
Chairman Gates, I have one other comment.
Sure.
And I don't see him out in the audience, hopefully he's listening up there somewhere, out there somewhere. But um, when I read Chief Crossen's contribution to the admin report, I was really struck. By uh the the tremendous accomplishments in a relatively short of time, short time. By uh our fire marshal's office, given the fact that there's been so much change, almost almost complete turnover, starting with him. And almost the entire staff and just looking through all the the accomplishments nonetheless. Uh, I was just really, really impressed. I mean, a lot of the folks sitting out here and and elsewhere in your senior staff. Uh, in twenty twenty two uh went through a lot of change and assignments, responsibilities. Changing authority, span of control, et cetera, et cetera. But I don't think anybody had quite the challenge that Chief Crossen had, at least from my point of view. And the fact that he uh readily accepted that challenge and a whole new area of responsibility. With the departure of so many staff people and, you know, this is such an important function uh for the community, for the business community especially. Uh, in our residential community. Um, just to keep it going is remarkable. I have not heard anything negative, which is really remarkable when you consider all the change. Negative from the community, from the Chamber of Commerce. So if there is anything out there, I certainly haven't heard it, and I think if that's the case, that whatever. Um, you know, whatever consequences uh is heard is result of all that change. It must not have been major, or we probably would have heard about it. Um, in terms of impact, adverse impact. So I just want to commend Kevin for hanging in there and sticking with it. Uh, and leading that that whole office through a tremendous change process, which is ongoing. So Kevin, if you're out there, congratulations for.
I'm sure, yeah, Commissioner, I am out here and thank you. And I'll just tell you, it's a whole office. Um, it's not just me, in fact, I'm a very small piece of it in all honesty, because as as I'm learning a lot about the work in here. Um, but the whole office is taking on. I wish I could say we're near the end of it, but honestly, we're kind of in the middle of it. As I did, as I did my year review, where we talked about the three new people coming in, changing systems, changing how 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 we're doing everything. That's a piece of it, but as I did a little forecasting for what the next two, three years brings. Uh, you you're very right, the other half of the office is going to change in the next two, three years, so. Um, on behalf of everyone in the office, they thank you very much for your comments. Uh, we're looking forward to it and we'll just keep moving forward.
Thank you, Kevin.
Anything else regarding the administrative period report? January budget.
Turn it over to Joe.
Thank you. Uh, this time of the year, as we transition from uh one year to another, it's not uncommon for us to be a little bit over budget. There's always a last minute push in December uh to get things expensed. Sometimes they don't always fall into. Uh, fiscal year that we had planned. And there's also typically a lot of payments that are due at the beginning of the year. So again, not uncommon, I went back and looked. In twenty one, uh, in January of twenty one, we're three percent over budget. Last year, we were sixty two hundredths of a percent over budget, so we're doing pretty good this year already. At uh point, or I'm sorry, eighty eight hundredths of a percent over budget, so. Um, hopefully it'll be like last year and we'll trend well and end the year um at or under budget. And with that, I will hand over the particulars to Finance Supervisor and Kelsey Barrett.
Okay, our mid-month utilities totaling three hundred forty three thousand, four hundred eleven dollars and eighty six cents. Our accounts payable warrants totaling one million, five hundred fifty nine thousand, four hundred thirty six dollars and eighty six cents. Our payroll direct deposit totaling one million, four hundred ninety three thousand, five hundred sixty eight dollars and seventy six cents. Our payroll warrants totaling thirty six thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars and twenty eight cents. Our E F T P S totaling three hundred forty four thousand, two hundred seventy six dollars and twenty seven cents. And our medical claims processed as of January seventeenth totaling one hundred seventy four thousand, eight dollars and fifty five cents. So the total approval for tonight is three million, nine hundred fifty one thousand, five hundred ten dollars and fifty eight cents.
Thank you. So I have motion and second to approve vouchers.
Chairman, I approve, but or move that we approved uh the vouchers for uh. It presented. Second.
Any uh questions regarding vouchers? If not, all in favor of approving vouchers, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Here unanimously. Thank you. All right. At this point, uh, the board is going to adjourn into executive session. For R C L B A forty two dot thirty dot one forty four B. That portion of a meeting during which the governing body is planning or adopting a strategy. Or position to be taken by the governing body during course of any collective bargaining, special negotiations. Regrets or mediation proceedings or reviewing proposals made in the negotiations or proceeding in progress. Um, joining the board in executive session will be Chief McCaptain, Executive Director Gannon, Vision Chief Crossen. Executive Secretary Rory Perry. Director Lee, Vision Chief Smith, Assistant Chief Van Voltenberg. Um, what about our attorney?
Yeah.
Okay, and our and our attorney, Joe Williams. At this time, we will recess for five minutes to get everyone transferred into executive session. We anticipate the executive session lasting for fifteen minutes. Action may or may not be taken after the executive session. At the end of executive session, we will take a two minute recess to get everyone transferred back over to the regular meeting.